Twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, and this is the meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Fairfax. First this evening is a pledge of allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the by of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, a motion to admit Commissioner Rice to participate remotely, Mr. Feather.
Mr. Chair, I move that in accordance with the Planning Commission adopted policy, that it is permitted by code, by the Code of Virginia, section two point two dash three seven zero eight point two, to approve the request from Planning Commissioner Matthew Rice, properly submitted in writing prior to tonight's meeting, for remote participation, subject to the requirements outlined in the Planning Commission adopted policy, and applicable in all portions of the Planning Commission meeting of July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Motion by Mr. Feather. Second by Mr. F. DeCary. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This is six to zero. Next is present, um, next is, excuse me, number two, is discussion and adoption of the agenda. Any discussion of the agenda this evening by the commissioners? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Chairman, I move adoption of the agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham.
Second.
Second by Mr. Coleman. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that passes a seven to zero. Next is presentations by the public on any matter not calling for a public hearing. Would anybody like to address the Planning Commission this evening on any matter not calling for a public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item number four, which is consideration of the July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes. Any discussion on the meeting minutes from July the eleventh? Okay, Mr. Feather.
Mr. Chair, I move the adoption of the meeting minutes of July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, as most recently issued.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Feather. Second by Ms. Lockhart. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And it passes unanimously. Okay, we will move on to item five, which is items not requiring a public hearing. There are none this evening. There are also no public hearings under item number six, so we'll adjourn the regular meeting and move into the work session. Two items this evening. The first is a progress update on the Camp Washington Small Area Plan. The members of Cunningham Quill are here this evening, and Ms. Kluart, I guess you will get us started, so when you're ready, we are.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. This evening we'll be discussing updates on the Camp Washington Small Area Plan with a presentation led by members of the consultant team from Cunningham Quill Architects. In the final phase of this project, the consultant has refined their initial recommendations presented earlier in the year, based on Planning Commission, council, staff, and public feedback. This effort is culminated in a draft plan that includes final recommendations on guidance for private development and public investment in the study area. At tonight's work session, the consultant will present the recommendations included in the draft plan, as well as summarize the background information that informed these recommendations. Overarching goals for the study area and the recommendations for both the land uses and the transportation network improvements that will allow the city to reach these goals will be presented and discussed as part of this presentation. The plan will continue to be amended in preparation for public hearings with the Planning Commission and City Council in September, where it will be considered for adoption. With that, if there are no questions for me, I'll pass it over to Lee Quill from the Cunningham Quill team for this evening's presentation.
Good evening. It's wonderful to be back with you tonight. Joining me tonight, again, my name is Lee Quill from Cunningham Quill. Joining me tonight are Nandor Mitresak and Adam Chamey. The last time we were together was three and a half months ago, at the end of March on the twenty-eighth, and then we had a follow-up work session with council on April fifth. From our virtual kickoff meeting literally a year ago, or over a year ago, on June ninth, through the Planning Commission and City Council work session of July twenty-one, our in-person community charrette at Catherine Johnson Middle School on November eighteen, twenty-one, our in-person town hall presentation at Catherine Johnson Auditorium on February twenty-fourth, and our last work session with you, which we just mentioned in council, in March and April, the city and our consultant team, and obviously all of you, have worked to have extensive interaction and engagement with the community to help meaningfully inform the evolution of this very important Activity Center Small Area Plan. Responding to community, Planning Commission, City Council input, tonight we will share with you an update on our continuing discussions and meetings with the community. This is both by staff and by the consultant team. We'll articulate the five major goals of the Small Area Plan, provide an update on the vision plan and its three newly defined character areas, and provide more detail on the specifics of a plan in these areas, including height, parking strategies, pedestrian circulation and safety strategies. Finally, while the study is still in process, we will brief you on the activities related to the new traffic study being conducted to help inform the discussions and decision-making process related to the Small Area Plan. One point of reference for you all tonight, our team member Aditya Inhmdar, our transportation bike and pedestrian colleague with Kittleson, is unfortunately unable to join us tonight because he's ill. You can imagine why. So we will answer the questions and his area of expertise as best we can. We'll be taking the notes down, and if we can't give a clear answer tonight, we will make sure we get that back to you. I will now turn the discussion over to Nandor and to Adam to take you through the above-noted information, and we'll be back for questions at the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee, and good evening. Since our last work session a few months ago, we've had several bi-weekly meetings with Paul and his team, and meetings with additional meetings with stakeholders. One of the key meetings, next slide, that we had recently was the walking tour with the Westmore neighborhood, and then after that, Paul and his team reached out to the Fairchester neighborhood and also had a stakeholder meeting with that community. And we really wanted to, you know, as we, as we refine the rapport and kind of think about a lot of the details, we wanted to have a good relationship with the communities, with the commercial property owners, and just kind of think, have our feet on the ground and kind of think about some of these details, and kind of imagine, imagine how they play out in the future. It was really, the Westmore walking tour was a really great gathering. I think we had a wide variety of stakeholders. We had property owners. We had lots of community members who were really engaged, and we received a lot of great comments from the community. It was good to kind of see the topography and the landscape and kind of, just kind of things that you see in real life. We've walked the site multiple times over the last year, but it was good to kind of walk it with the community and have the community point out details like, you know, there's missing sidewalks for most of this neighborhood at this interface along Park Road. It's good to kind of get a sense of kind of the gradual and then steep topography change as you, as you look up towards Fairfax Boulevard, things like that. And just kind of, you know, we sat at the intersection, you know, the various intersections along Park Road, and you could kind of see the speeding traffic and kind of, you know, the kind of the mess that some of these disjointed urban grid creates. So, you know, we, we, and I know a lot of you were there and got to hear firsthand some of the concerns and some of the actually optimism that a lot of the community members shared with us. It was, it was great to have this tour, and, you know, we hope to, you know, get some of those comments and just kind of feed them into the report. Next slide. The report, we'd like to start with some of the planned goals, just kind of think big picture. If we go to the next slide, you know, the, Camp Washington is an area with great retail. It's a great location. Historically, it's always been that way. There's high volumes of traffic, high visibility. But one thing that has been lost over time is this idea of, you know, we've had a year's worth of stakeholder meetings, and it's very rarely someone describes Camp Washington as a memorable place, or a place that they, that sticks out to them, or is, you know, they've had a great experience that sticks out in their mind. And that's something that we think is a lost potential here. We really think that it has all the ingredients to be a, a place that really is memorable and can serve the community, serve the region, serve the city very well. It just kind of needs that spark. So goal number one is to cultivate memorable places within the study area. Number two, and this is something that was reflected in the walking tour, is you have these high-functioning commercial properties and, you know, a lot of potential within them, and then you have these great surrounding neighborhoods around them. And we really want to carefully design and kind of think about the transitions from, from these commercial corridors to the neighborhoods. And we've put a lot of thought in the document and kind of showed a lot of diagrams, and we'll continue to evolve that in the next, you know, few months. Next slide. Goal number three is to improve the multimodal environment. What we mean by this is Camp Washington today, and has historically been, a car-dominated environment. All the details, all the, kind of the major corridors, the volumes, everything is designed around the car and the experience around the car. Even the commercial properties are, you know, kind of thinking about, they're first thinking about parking and access to retail and convenience. But we see potential in increasing the visibility and the prominence of multimodal transportation. There's, there's a bunch of middle schools and elementary schools around this neighborhood. There's great pedestrian-oriented neighborhoods that want to access these properties. And even some of these properties, the commercial properties themselves, they, they see a future in multimodal access. So we, goal number three is to really kind of improve the accessibility for non-car uses and non-car movement. Goal number four, there's a lack of open, public open space within Camp Washington, almost zero. And that's just kind of how it's evolved over time, but we, we think there's a potential for a great network of high-quality public open spaces. And, and we've even highlighted areas where they can fold into ideas of sustainability and stormwater capture and, and really kind of bring high-quality open space to this part of the city, which is where it's sort of lacking. And finally, goal number five is to allow land uses to evolve to meet future needs. And what we mean by that, in this slide, on the left, you see kind of new construction going on in the study area, and there will be a lot of new construction. We see that in the market analysis, and there's a lot of potential for new construction. But also, on the right side, we have an example of a coffee shop in Richmond that was an adaptive reuse project. And, and we see a lot of potential here for adaptive reusing of buildings. Maybe the car dealership or the car repair center, you know, maybe they move out to a better location, and we have this empty structure, and maybe that could be a, a new retail function in the future. So, you know, there's opportunities for both adaptive reuse and new, new construction, and we kind of want to keep that in mind. And Camp Washington has always been a flexible, continually evolving retail regional hub, so we'll see that to continue in the future. Next slide. In the final report, we focus on three character areas, taking this, this rather large study area and subdividing into three focus areas. We have Fern Street Triangle to the east, and, and this is kind of anchored on some of the larger commercial properties that are around, kind of around Fern Street, Lee Highway, and Fairfax Boulevard. To the north, we have the Cutner Park Hub, and this, these are commercial properties that are kind of surrounding Cutner Park, which is kind of a, a great city resource and is, has great location. It's next to the middle school and some public resources, but these commercial properties today kind of turn their backs to it. But, you know, that will change in the future, and we see a lot of potential there. Finally, we have Germantown Village. This is kind of the interface between the city and the county. We, we see this subarea as a kind of a longer-term goal. There's, there's a lot of like great potential here, especially, you know, with the Dominion property, things that may take a long time to evolve but may unlock in the future, and really provide a fantastic interface to the county. Excellent. We've, we've evolved some of the renderings and kind of the build-out plans in the long-term vision plan, and we'll, we'll do one more update, I think, before the final plan, just based on kind of feedback we've heard from the community and from property owners, and just kind of like thinking about all of our analysis, analysis up to date. Next slide. And then we've done some thought into kind of near-term vision plan. We're thinking about in the next five to 10 years, what are some of the key areas that are likely, more, more likely to develop, and, you know, what's kind of our sense of potential skills of density and kind of building typologies that may evolve. And, you know, we see some activity, you know, in the Fern Street Triangle area and Cutner Park. Those are kind of more nearer-term potential areas, and then Germantown, again, is a kind of a longer-term subarea. So with the Fern Street Triangle, it's really focused on Fern Street, which is currently, you know, kind of a, a disjointed road, but it, it could, we see the potential of really stitching together the residential neighborhoods to the north and south of Camp Washington into the, kind of the heart of, of the study area. And there are a lot of commercial properties that are, that have stakeholders that have been involved with the plan. They're, they're thinking about the need of public open space, the need for multimodal transportation, and we think there's, there's kind of a potential here for creating a center for Camp Washington, some, something that is, has maybe a central plaza or some kind of public resource that people can walk to, walk their families to, walk their kids, and, and create, have a memorable place right in the center of Camp Washington. You know, this is, this is a high-visibility area. We have large volumes of traffic on Fairfax Boulevard and Lee Highway. People will see it. So we're really excited about the idea of the Fern Street Triangle. This is a diagram where, you know, there are different types of open spaces. There's kind of, there's, there's like a dense urban street there with, with storefronts. There's kind of an urban plaza, I think number one, the new civic plaza at Fern Street. And then there's kind of side and kind of pocket parks, like number four, a new neighborhood open space. You know, that, that specific location of that park may vary within that commercial property. And then as we go north, in this diagram, which is planned south in, in, in real life, as we transition to the neighborhood, you know, we're stepping down in density and height and scale down to Park Road. Excellent. One detail we've been thinking a lot about since, since our last work session is this Fern Street connector and how it connects to the Westmore neighborhood. We looked at a variety of options. We looked at two-way, car-bound with on-street parking. We looked at one-way, northbound with on-street parking. We looked at pedestrian-only. Our plan is recommending a, a pedestrian and bike shared-use path connector through that resource. And, and it will be designed where, you know, it's kind of street-like, where it has bollards that prevent cars from accessing it, but, you know, maybe on festival days or days where you want more openness and movement, you could, you could take the bollards out and just kind of have, have a more open feel. But really, the important thing with Fern Street is having a strong bike and ped connection to the heart of Camp Washington and these, these great, this network of great open spaces. You know, this may, this can involve in, in the future. We're, we're, we're excited about kind of having the first step of connectivity for the Westmore neighborhood, and this is kind of where we've landed so far. The next subarea is Cutner Park Hub. As I mentioned before, Cutner Park today is a great resource. It's well-loved by the community, but it's kind of back-of-house for these commercial properties especially. There's, you know, the parking garages are kind of slammed up against the boundary of the park. The loading docks are kind of aligned at the park. These commercial properties don't really like orient themselves or honor the park itself, and that will change in the future. We, we've had great stakeholder interviews with all the adjacent property owners, and, and they do have a development future in mind, you know. Maybe, maybe it's near-term, maybe it's long-term, but these commercial properties will evolve. And as they evolve, we want to see a better relationship between the community, Cutner Park, and, and these commercial properties. And we think, we, we have a couple key ideas here. One is kind of this new promenade that kind of straddles the interface between the, the public park and these private properties. We've, in the next slide, we've shown a street section of how that could work with this promenade, where we have, you know, mixed-use buildings and then active storefronts or active ground floor uses with ample sidewalks and, and active frontage, and then, you know, this kind of alley or this promenade kind of feel, really opening up to Cutner Park. And, and especially from kind of Fairfax Boulevard, Lee Highway, Germantown Road, having corridors of view and access to Cutner Park, as opposed to closing it off, which is the condition today. And it will really, you know, we, we think this will be a great corner of Fairfax. You know, you have the middle school, when those, when the parents are picking them up, you know, maybe they all kind of walk, walk down and visit this area and really enjoy, have, have an afternoon, or you can, you can imagine a weekend. Maybe there's like soccer practice in, in Cutner Park, and, and you can really, you know, again, creating memorable places. This is a place that will be beautiful and kind of have, have an experience that doesn't exist today. The last subarea, Germantown Village, again, this is more long-term. There's a lot of large properties, such as Dominion, that will take, you know, years if not decades to kind of change and evolve. But this is the, the area that has a couple of things. One is a lot of transit goes through Germantown Road specifically, but also kind of Fairfax Boulevard and Lee Highway. And this, we, we believe that this Germantown Village is a great location for kind of a transit hub or kind of people coming from west to east or east to west. You know, they're really going to kind of stop here to kind of go from kind of local to regional traffic. Another opportunity is the Dominion site. You know, it's, it's a very large property right in the middle of the study area. We, we think there's ample space for kind of this new public park or a greenway that can be an anchor point and a place of memory and open space that commercial properties around it can develop and kind of face toward, orient the buildings towards. And then we have Government Center Parkway. The city is already investing in Government Center Parkway, re-nitting the city to the county, and, and we're going to get a lot of people from the county actually coming over to Camp Washington. So we want to, you know, this will be a new gateway for the city. Another thing that we've been really working with Paul and his team and just kind of working with the community is building heights. And, you know, building heights is a, is a pretty poor proxy for density, but it is, you know, something that people kind of pay a lot of attention to. We presented this first draft in, in February twenty twenty-two, a few months ago, and we've heard a lot of feedback from a lot of stakeholders and, and the community and, and city staff. So, and the next slide, we've refined some of the building heights. I think that the core idea is here that within the triangle, we have kind of the seven-story max outside of the, you know, the areas around the cemetery. And then as we go from this core triangle area out to the edges, we're stepping down in height. And, and it gets, you know, there's a lot of topography into play here and a lot of adjacency issues and, you know, areas that have neighborhoods next to them, we're, we're more sensitive, and we want to step down in height. Areas that are, you know, nearby other commercial properties on, on the county side and near Cutner Park and stuff, where, you know, we're looking at a six-story max, for example. So, you know, essentially, we're looking at kind of in the middle, in the triangle, where it's bounded by the three, three corridors. We have the seven-story max, and then we're just kind of tailoring it towards, and stepping down towards the neighborhoods. We, we provided this diagram for the Germantown Cemetery. We've worked with those stakeholders for, for almost a year now, and we're very sensitive. We, we're proposing a forty-foot minimum kind of no-build buffer around the property line, and then kind of a, a five-story max kind of setback sixty feet beyond that. So kind of a hundred feet of kind of buffer around the Germantown Cemetery. In the report, we're going to provide this diagram, which is talking about the new quality open spaces that we're, this plan is proposing. And this is something we hope the community is excited about. We've heard a lot about the, the desire for open space, the desire of different types of open space, not, not just parks, not just pedestrian plazas, but, you know, things like kind of urban streetscapes, pocket parks, minor green spaces, and then kind of large, really kind of leafy and green and large green spaces. Next slide. We've provided models for, for new streets within the study area, and recognizing that this is still going to be a, a car-centric region within Northern Virginia, and some of the retail, we've recognized that a lot of the retail struggles, if they don't have ample parking, easily accessible parking. So we've provided street sections with two-way, two-way streets with parallel parking, as well as two-way streets with diagonal parking, if, if they need a little bit more parking, kind of in front of retail storefronts. And, and we recommend these street sections throughout the plan. You know, we have some kind of major streets, some minor streets, and some alleys within the street network. Excellent. We've provided diagrams in the report on pedestrian-friendly parking strategies. We recognize that a lot of these building typologies are going to still have a large volume of their customers come in by car from the region, not even from local, you know, there will be local traffic and local city residents using these businesses, but, you know, they, they cast a wide neck, net. And, and so if, if we do have kind of these, these typologies with, you know, large amounts of attention to parking and cars and large amount of retail, real estate dedicated to parking, we, we still want to see these businesses and, and new development pay attention to the pedestrian streetscape. You know, maybe, maybe they align their buildings closer to the street edge. They create street front, frontage along, you know, the major corridors, major, major streets. Maybe they, they utilize things like diagonal parking and, you know, keep, keep the parking to the rear. And that way, over time, we're building towards a pedestrian-friendlyer landscape. Next slide. And even things like big-box retail, you know, there, there will, there will be big-box retailers in this study area. It's a great location for it, and we recognize that. But even that typology can use things like structured parking or kind of interesting thing, things in building section, strategies in, you know, maybe building placement within the site, and, and assist towards creating this multimodal environment. As Lee mentioned, Aditya is unable to be here, but one important analysis that we've been doing in the last couple of months has been this neighborhood traffic study. They've set up major data collection through, through the residential neighborhoods and, and within the study area and outside the study area. And some of the conclusions are here, and, and we'll have a full kind of report with all the raw data for you to look at in, in the final report. I think one of, one of the big takeaways is that, you know, there are occasional speeding and, and traffic volumes, but I think what we're seeing is that these, these volumes are not close to VDOT standards for cut-through mitigation, and that's a statewide kind of generic standard. But, you know, we as a city have the, you know, the power to kind of dig deeper and even, you know, set our own standards here. So, you know, we, we have heard a lot of community concern about cut-through traffic, and, and we've recognized that. We've seen it with our own eyes. And, and we, we're working with the city and staff to kind of think about, you know, creative ways to mitigate those concerns. But we will provide the full analysis in the final report. And the last few slides are just talking about kind of the future road network and how we're stitching this kind of disjointed study area into kind of a more regularized urban grid with kind of better connectivity between the neighborhoods, between properties, and, and again, making this multi, working towards this multimodal environment. Excellent. And the final slide. And that's it.
Okay.
We're going to open this up for Q.
Yeah, absolutely.
Me and I and Adam will be available for questions.
Well, you guys have known me long enough, you know, I, we want to have a discussion with you as best, as best we can in this weird environment where we stare at you and you stare at us. So would anybody like to, I mean, I have a bunch of questions, but would anybody like to sort of kick it off with a, Mr. Coleman?
I'm just curious. On the property owner outreach slide, if my recollection is correct, it looks like it's the two gas stations and that small strip. I'm just curious what their, why they didn't feel like participating or they just never responded, or?
Well, we'll bring that slide up, and then Nandor can address that, because we've spoken to a lot of people. There have been some people that didn't, yeah.
Most people are excited.
The gas stations you're talking about specifically.
Are you talking about at the intersection of Fairfax Boulevard and Germantown Road?
I think it's the BP, which is, which is close to the cemetery.
Oh, yeah.
And there's that Shell station that would be right behind, kind of where the That Shell station that would be right behind, kind of where the Japole is. And then the, I believe the other one next to that is the kind of that small strip mall where Epicure was.
Right.
And, and the dry cleaners and the vacuum thing.
And we actually, it's not just Fairfax or Camp Washington. We see this a lot in a lot of plans where a lot of these gas stations have very complex ownership.
Yeah.
And they're, you know, they may be owned by a absentee landlord in, you know, Texas or North Carolina or whatever. And it's, you know, the city works very hard to try to reach out to them, but it's like kind of a maze of who, who actually owns it. And how can we, you know, reach that person and, and it, and we have, Paul, I don't know if you have any insight on kind of reaching out to those specific properties, but we, you know, we, we reached out, we did our best to reach out to them and I, I think we see this a lot in a lot of plans where the gas stations are notoriously hard to just find. Find and you, you know, even if you physically walk there and talk, try to ask for the owner, you, you, you can't get them, so.
You'll get a P O box somewhere.
So that's a generic answer. I don't, I don't know about specifically if you have any insight, Paul.
Not necessarily. Just to um, provide a little background about the information that we were able to provide and the, the information we have um, that we can share with them isn't always the correct information you need to reach the owner. Uh, we have our real estate database, but that's often um, just a P O box somewhere. We don't have a contact name or anything like that. Uh, in some cases with these property owners, we've had people who have reached out to us in the past. We have property owners who have been through land use cases. Have had some kind of reason to contact the city in the past. In those cases, we did have a contact with, for them and so we shared it with the consultant. Um, so the majority of those is where they were able to get ahold of somebody. It's the ones where we just haven't had the communication in the past where we weren't able to do it.
Cool. And sometimes they s- when, when they go on in the market, that's when you, you finally find out. Uh, and I think that is the case with one or two of these properties. They, they might be on, up for sale.
So there's, there's nothing to read into it about the type or the use type.
Exude gas stations specifically, no.
No, I mean, I guess, I guess what I meant was, I, I'm looking here and I see gas stations, banks and fast food restaurants.
Yeah, which are the hard ones that.
Okay.
They're corporately owned and they're very difficult.
So that, that, I mean, okay, so that's in, in your view, the reason why they may or may not have responded and not the use themselves, right?
Right.
That, that wouldn't be a use that would be likely to
Yeah.
just tear down their place and redevelop it? Or is it just basically this, it's hard to get to them?
I think it's hard to get to them.
Okay.
And we see this in other study areas too, so it's not, it's not unique to.
And then let me just, as we started this effort in April of twenty-one. And you know, it's not for uh, lack of meetings or lack of reach, outreach or the city trying to reach contact. You know, you, you reach out and if people don't want to respond, then that is their prerogative. But you know, we're trying to reach everybody and we have, it's, you know, we haven't knocked on every single door in the city, but we've, you know, we've been out there. So it's, you will probably still get somebody that will show up at the, the commission hearing in the fall saying, I didn't know anything about this. Uh, you, that's a normal, someone will have missed it, but um, you know.
Yes, it happens in every case, usually. Okay, Mr. Coleman, any other questions? Okay. Other commissioners? Mr. Feather.
Uh, thank you and thank you for the work. I'm sorry I couldn't make the Westmore uh, walkthrough. I was a little interested in the decision for your final recommendation on Fern Street Connector. Was that largely driven by community input or? Because from a transportation perspective, it sounds like there's large value to a, a more really true multimodal, I wouldn't call pedestrian and bike multimodal. I was kind of, always been intrigued by the one-way out concept, which might mitigate some of the concerns for cut-through traffic. I don't know if the cut-through traffic is likely or not considering the street configuration.
Yeah, I'll let Nandor and Adam.
You were there and I wasn't, so.
Get into more detail, but as you know, uh, as it continues to come in, you know, there is a little bit of a diversity of opinion on what should happen there uh, in the Fern Street Connector. Westmore, obviously, uh, there was more people that were concerned about traffic cut-through, so they, they would like to see more pedestrian. City around that, uh, more people would like to see a connected network of streets and uh, I think so. Nandor can go into more specifics from the latest community meeting we have, but but what we're trying to do is build in flexibility uh, for, for you and council as you're listening to this, first of all, information and it will be that diversity, so it's not going to be you know, overwhelming or one or another, but what you need to be able to have as a city is flexibility for change over time without major um, upheaval. So right now we're showing a, a narrower road with bollards and walkway and Nandor can, you know, take you back through that. There's a potential for widening that and making it still pedestrian, but then allowing it for it to convert at a later time. Or what we like to see a lot of times are pilot projects where Nandor had mentioned a bit about, you know, a festival or something like that or some activity here in the city. Where you can do a pilot program. Maybe you open it up at different times of the year for a period of time and then um, you know, see what the traffic really is, you know, what's it like in summer, what's it like in the fall, et cetera. But still be, and then, you know, close it back down with the bollards so you can get real-time information to help the community inform what happens on Saturdays, you know, is there really cut-through traffic there? Um, uh, or, or not, or rush, certain rush hours. So uh, we would like to build into flexibility. So if you guys think we ought to widen it a little bit or something more than what we're doing, uh, please advise us on your thoughts, but um, that's where we are. Nandor, anything you want to add?
Lee, I think you summarized it pretty well. Um, I, I think uh, the Kittleson team, they, they, they've done a lot of analysis now and they have, they have a lot of real-time data on the volumes and kind of, um, kind of the wide range of users in that area. And I think, I think even their analysis and they, they, they usually very strongly promote connectivity and having more access points. Even their analysis was a little mixed. Um, it, there, there's some benefits surely and we're, we're real, and, and I think as a general planning principle, we love connectivity, even, you know, street grids, traditional street blocks. That's something we always advocate for. You know, opening up to vehicular traffic on, on this Fern Street Connector, it is kind of mixed, you know, it's a, it has benefits and and negatives and, and we're, we're not, because even the transportation analysis was rather mixed, I, I think we'd like, we, we settled on this. Um, you know, we, we felt number one, most strongly about getting better connectivity for the pedestrians and bikers from Westmore neighborhood over to these commercial properties. That, that's kind of the number one core principle. And you know, we, we can evolve this over time. Maybe this i- is more incremental change and you know, for the next fifteen, five, ten years, it's kind of the strong shared-use path connector that can be opened up during special days or special moments. And then in the future, maybe the, the community and other stakeholders feel more comfortable opening it up more, but you know, we, we feel this is a good, first strong step for this connector.
Uh, thank you. One of the other transportation-related questions I had, you didn't discuss it this evening. We talked about it last time and I had at least a thought. It was about the frontage road on Fairfax Boulevard that goes from the, you know, the major intersection west on Route fifty out toward Be- Bevan Drive, say. You didn't talk about your current thoughts on that. Have you had any further thoughts on that?
This is great because you're hitting us with all those that have had great diversity of opinion in the city. And again, the connectivity uh, that we're trying to get there. Our int- our estimation based on uh, the evolution over time is that while we're showing a long-term vision of a lo- a, a number of projects, you know, redeveloping to higher in- intensity uh, within this, the triangle itself. Uh, we've, we do believe that the areas where the car dealerships are now will remain car dealerships for the near future, even if we go to, you know, hybrid or electric, et cetera. Uh, there'll still be a, we'll still need to get around and, and we're still, there's a lot of debate about whether everybody's going to want to get into you know, uh, an autonomous Uber-type approach. Uh, there will be some of that, obviously, as it moves forward. But for, for, for quite a few years, we believe there will be uh, uh, still car dealerships or uh, you'll find an evolution of buildings like when we were trying to show uh, where you had the building in, in Richmond for Roastology, which is the gas station where it became a um, uh, coffee shop, which is in the museum district down there. It's actually a beautiful rendition. Uh, they got uh, we didn't have it in the photos because I missed that when I took it, but uh, there's outdoor seating, et cetera. We think that there will be adaptive reuse of these air, these buildings along the northern side of Fairfax Boulevard uh, into places like an R E I or something that uh, meets the values of places here. So what that means is there's a strong debate about whether you take that road out and put the uh, you know, wider path in and create a, a turn lane off of uh, uh, Fairfax or whether you leave that there. And especially with the cars, people have been coming back and saying, a lot of people are test-driving uh, their automobiles, at least to some degree, getting a feel for it in that area. So um, I, I don't think there's a, a, a very singular direction that we've been able to identify within the city. Anything?
Hey, everyone. I just wanted, I just wanted to add a little bit to this. Um, so we, we also talked a lot with the community about this idea and in general, there was really wide support for the idea of a shared-use path that's like, you know, great for biking, kind of cleaning up that view of those car dealerships. And, but there was some discomfort a little bit about having that right turn lane and about that access. You know, Kittleson has done a lot of really, really hard work and demonstrated that in general that right turn lane would work. It needs more analysis. Each of those properties is very different in the way that their access is. So a lot of our framing of this is also thinking about it more in the long-term plan rather than a immediate turn. Um, you know, as Lee mentioned with the redevelopment of some of these shopping centers, there's going to be more and more opportunity to do this. But a big part of it is about doing it right and doing it with further study and with, in concert with maybe one of these one of these, at least one or two of these being redeveloped. But in general, you know, I think it's something that we feel pretty strongly should be in this plan in some form. And we're, we're kind of grounding it in that kind of a long-term.
Adam, do you mind pulling up the slide?
Yep. Um, this is the, should be on the board right now, the section of the linear park with the right turn lane and then the existing condition as well.
So I, I think one thing that all stakeholders and, and all the participants of this study can agree is that this access lane is kind of underutilized. It's, it's a lot of space and it's kind of a waste of space and, and kind of if you, if you observe the daily use and just kind of what, what it represents and what it does in, in reality. Um, and we strongly believe and we've drawn, we've provided and recommended this in the plan is over time, converting this into kind of a greenway for the community that provides better connectivity. It, it's free land. We, we can, we should, we should use it. And Kittleson has demonstrated, like Adam mentioned, that, you know, by adding this turn lane onto onto the Boulevard, we, we can kind of mitigate eh, eh, any if, most traffic kind of um, transition issues and kind of access to these properties. So uh, we have provided the vision. Uh, again, we think this is more of a long-term. This is not kind of a near-term, we have to do this right now type of idea, but um, we, we've provided and recommended this in the plan. Hope that's clear.
Yeah, because, because of the, the, the idea that struck me last time that I'd mentioned and making this multi-use vehicular, but one-way from like where mattress warehouse is out in Bevan. It's still providing someplace for the car carriers to be.
Right.
But not making a two-way, full two-way like it currently is. I think you could probably leave a two-way from that point uh, east to service all those other businesses there. I see if, that's a valuable entrance point, but anyway, you know, you still might want to entertain that idea.
We did, we actually did draw out multiple options for this and I, I believe we presented it to you all, maybe in the past.
I'm not sure we talked about that, a one-way sort of thing from that point.
And maybe we will provide in an appendix. Maybe we'll take a note and, you know, we, we've, we drew like three street section options looking at that.
Yeah, yeah.
Passage road and we'll provide that for, for reference.
Um, you also showed some diagonal parking options. Do you have a concept of where those might be? From a traffic standpoint, those can be disruptive depending on kind of road they're on.
Sure. I mean, they're not going to be on Fairfax Boulevard or, or the main arterials. Uh, the, these will be um, kind of the, I think in our road network, the red streets, which are kind of
Okay.
not the primary arterials, but maybe the main retail streets. Uh, and that's a concession to kind of, you know, the car nature of Northern Virginia and, you know, kind of we've seen in some areas within, even within the study area, if you don't have quick accessible parking, that, those retail storefronts die, like that, that use just cannot, is not viable and we recognize that and, you know, our economists are, are mindful of that as well, so.
For Woodworth, where we spend summers in Maine, they went through this, the small village of eliminating diagonal parking on the main street and all the businesses were up in arms, that their businesses would die, but they put relatively closed, large, well-lit public parking places and they've actually been very successful, so.
Yeah, California actually does a lot of diagonal parking pretty well, you know, in kind of the beach towns.
Took them out.
Yeah.
And the businesses didn't die and others have come in, so. I think it's just a question of getting used to the new concept and, and taking the walk.
Right.
I think that's all I had questions about. I'll go back and look at the red areas that. Thank you. Thanks.
I'm willing to bet that people are much less mad in this part of Maine than they are here in Northern Virginia. Any, I need more questions. Um, Mr. Fattigari.
Gentlemen, um, thanks for the update. Very well done. Um, quick question on slide thirty-two, going back to Commissioner Feather's comments. Uh, what, so just that second bullet, traffic volumes and speeds, not anywhere close to VDOT standards for cut. So what about, so the speed, uh, that's the, I think we talked about that. So if you look at the, if you look at traffic coming down Lee Highway to make a right on Fairfax Boulevard right up there, what it's, were, did folks discuss their concern about the speeds of cars going through that green arrow? Did, or did folks talk about, um, you know, um, speeding on Fairfax Boulevard? Did they, any of that was mentioned at all during your, your sessions at all? Because I'm curious, I mean, forget about PDOT standards, but what about community concerns?
I think this, this bullet point is referring to um, traffic volumes and speeds within the neighborhood streets, like Park Road.
Streets.
Yeah, yeah, not, not Fairfax Boulevard and Lee Highway, but rather these residential streets. You, you could see in the blue dots, that's, those are really kind of the traffic collection areas.
Right. So then I think you made a comment that there were solutions or tools that we as a city could use to address, you know, certain issues, but so I, I guess I turn this to our fellow commissioners and to staff. What tools do we have or solutions do we have for traffic and safety issues? I mean, because I'm dealing with it personally in my neighborhood and it's almost as, as, as there's nobody really wants to step up. I think it's almost as folks are inept in terms of actually putting down some type of solution. So before we start another issue here, what solutions do we have? What tools do we have? Can we say as a commission there are some issues here that we need to engage somebody, some department because someone may get killed? I mean, I'm just putting that out to the, to everyone here. I mean, does anyone?
And all you, actually, this is a really good conversation and uh, Adam had a really insightful conversation about Park Road and kind of how it has some blind corners. And it's just kind of a unique to Park Road itself. That, that was kind of kind of the poster child of some of these traffic speeding, cut-through issues. Uh, we had property owners that live on the corner of certain intersection and they sit on their porch and they watch. They're telling us every day, they see people speeding through their neighborhood and just kind of, you know, sit here and, you know, I, I see it every day. It's like, you know, it's real. And, you know, as, actually the walking tour is perfect because we, we actually walked the length of Park Road with the community and just kind of heard their stories and we can kind of see people driving through and Adam, you had a good description the other day.
Yeah, you know, um, when you're, the, the street is very windy. You have these big tall trees. Somebody maybe is even going twenty-five miles an hour, but you don't see them coming because of, you know, the turns of the roads, you know. And you don't have a sidewalk, so you're already kind of forced onto the street. And so a lot of, it's, it's not to say there isn't also people going wildly fast. That does happen as well. But um, a lot of the mitigation can just be, you know, adding that sidewalk, creating stop signs in regular intervals. Things that can kind of start to slow people down as they move into it is starting to be sort of what we're thinking about. And creating uh, visibility, you know, as these sites redevelop, like along Park Road, there is that opportunity, like the Fern Street Connector, to kind of create a really clean, vegetated access point where you can visibly see what's going on around you a little bit better. And I think that's probably something that's pretty typical in a lot of communities around here. A lot of the urban design plans in the fifty, sixty, seventies, even up to today, were about these kind of curvy roads that are slow-moving in the rural times, but now that we've gotten busier and busier, it's not necessarily, you know, as desirable, so.
Another thing about Park Road is, uh, you know, it's, it's two lanes of traffic and then on-street parking, but it's not like marked, so it just kind of, it's on-street parking, but it's not like marked, so it just kind, it's kind of 40 feet of pavement and it's kind of windy and, you know, just kind of like, there's not much there, so people are just kind of, I could see why people are kind of, maybe not even speeding, even like someone going 30 miles an hour seems really fast because it's kind of blind corners and just kind of, you're going through a residential neighborhood, so. It, it's kind of, and, and to be fair, Park Road is outside of, technically outside of our study area and, but we do talk to kind of providing things like Adam mentioned, sidewalks and, you know, kind of the, a better, kind of, we, we think kind of regularizing some of the grid and making it more traditional in terms of intersections and, and kind of traditional streetscape will help, you know, psychologically at least, slow down the drivers or like at least having them respect it as a community, as a, as a neighborhood, if they're coming through the neighborhood.
Yeah, I was going to say something similar. I live within a block, as does Commissioner Rice, of a four-way stop that no one ever, ever stopped at, despite there being police presence at that intersection, at least one day a week, if not more frequently. It doesn't seem to be a deterrent. People just roll through a four-way stop. I think the one thing that changes that makes people pay attention is when there's people actually walking through the intersection. So as much as you can activate the pedestrian aspect or just like the people in and out aspect of these neighborhoods and these streets, I think that's what will kind of make the switch flip over, people, oh, people live here, I should probably be careful. But yeah, I don't know how you change the human factor of driving through intersections and driving through neighborhoods as if they're just speedways.
Well, a number of tools that other jurisdictions have used that I know are probably in your, I hate using toolkit, your, your bucket or whatever, but I know if maybe staff is probably looking at some things that you may not be aware of, but in other locations, the, the road diet component, we've taken two, two lanes each way, four-lane roads, and made it one lane each way with the center turn. This is for a major road, not, not Park, we're not talking, a major, there's a turn and added bike lanes on the, on the exterior and it narrowed it down. So it's like, it's a, a road diet. And, and there were a number of people that were just like up in arms on this. It's like, how can you take these roads, you know, just two lanes away? And yes, during the height of rush hour, it's a little bit slower, a little bit slower than what it was before, but every other part of the time, the road is much more pedestrian-focused. Plus, they put in the crosswalks, like you were saying, it's clearly identifying crosswalks with, you know, like the white stripes, even in this one, they have concrete refuge in the middle and then the bumps are inside where, you know, you narrow the road down. There's also things, I'm not sure exactly, I did you a dirty exact terminology, but part of the pedestrian visual site work that's being done in a number of cities, I live in Alexandria, and they've literally come in and painted out gray areas to make instead of just on a, on a curve where you could just take it quickly, it's, you got to make it like a, a very short turning radius. They will paint in the gray area to stay out of and they put in these little bumpers that are about 18 inches long and about 12, you know, maybe 10 to 12 inches tall. So if you go over it, it's going to, you know, mess up your car. And that, that slows traffic down also. So there are a number of ways where you start to do road diet, work with pedestrian circulation, work with bikes, et cetera, that you can bring it down in addition to the streetscape, so.
Mr. Quill, when you say we, when you say they, are you talking about the city of Alexandria?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. You know, one thing that I think I may have said this, I don't even know if it was this past meeting, it might have been last year. You know, one thing I've written down on a number of pages, I just wrote the same two words, is policy prescription. Now, you, you might say this will become policy of the city and it, it might and it probably will, but some things a little bit more detailed along the lines of these types of measures, to specifically spell out, I think can help. And I think one of the things, and, you know, maybe this is partly on me, on the, on the downtown, you see a lot of interest in development, but I don't think our plans in the city in this policy way have kept up with addressing all the new people that will be there, because there is just a ton of speeding and it's not going to go away until cars are physically constrained in a way that, that Mr. Quill just described, at least to me. And I'm not an auto expert, but it's not really like rocket science like that. So, you know, I just feel like sometimes we can use this as an opportunity and I think Mr. F. DeCary brought up a good point, what are the tools we can? Well, one of the things is to specifically say in here that these things are likely to be accomplished, number one, by these types of efforts and number two, by public investment, because not all these things are going to happen with the developer. So, and some will, but some won't and some can't wait. So I, you know, I don't, that's a hard job for you guys. The staff is probably going to have to be involved in something like that because I don't know the limits of what the city can and can't do. Every time I hear the, the term MUTCD, I just want to like run out of the room. So like, we obviously need people who know that to, to deal with it, but I think that that's a way to think about it. That's how I've looked at the downtown, the smart plan in the downtown. There are actually good, good examples of how to road diet in there. So that's, that's something, but how you do it, how it is accomplished, I think is something that perhaps might be beneficial in here, especially because this area is particularly dangerous or can be, so.
The reason I said we on the earlier thing in Alexandria is I'm on the design review board for Carlisle East Eisenhower and I actually was involved in some of those things for that particular area, so yes, so thank you, but they being the city of Alexandria. I'll just close on this, is that cities have much more control over their street network, as you know, than counties, which are subject to dealing with VDOT more. So that, that gives us great hope, because I mean, you know, the city does have these opportunities, a lot more to control things in their jurisdiction than the counties do, which are more have to defer to VDOT. So that's what we're referring to.
Okay.
I mean, because if you, if you suggest a policy, right, or a way, I mean, the zoning ordinance or our other, other ordinances can be changed to say, for instance, in this area, the buffers need to be wider or they need to be different or they need to utilize more, you know, modern efforts to separate cars from pedestrians or other people or other uses. So I just bring that up, that's, I threw a lot out there in that, but I do think that that's potentially helpful. I don't know if that addresses exactly what, what you said, but are there any other comments on that? Yeah, go ahead. So just, so from the corner of Fairfax Boulevard to Bevan, that side street, I guess. Call it dealership drive, whatever that road is right there.
I like that.
When, when you put the, when you put the trees and the bike paths there, how, how do the tractor trailers, the car trailers, how are they going to get in there to offload their cargo? I mean, so the, you know, if you come down to our, to the other end of North Fairfax, what the cars, what the trailers do, they just pull into residential streets and dump their cars, you know, they offload their cars. So, which is, which is a big issue for safety. You know, the city, you said, that has more, has a little bit more flexibility in terms of what they, you know, the way we've been instructed as a resident, as residents, is that a sign should suffice that you can't park here, but no one pays attention to the sign. So how are you going to kind of mitigate that on, from that end? Where are those tractor trailers going to park?
That's probably just a change of time that we've talked about, you know?
Yeah, we have heard that comment that the, the frontage road or dealership drive, that's a good, that's a good one.
There's a couple of them.
That's kind of the current location where the trailers are pulling into and technically they're not supposed to park there, but that's in function in reality, because, because a lot of these dealerships are not designed to accommodate the full trailer and the radius and kind of the large sweep, so we recognize that. And that's why we're not super, you know, saying, we're not saying that this is a, a near-term must-have change and we recognize that. I, I, I think the, the idea is that in the future, these car dealerships may change use over time and as they do, we're, we're building towards this street section of, of this frontage road turning into a resource for the community. But it's a really good point and we'll think about that some more.
Yeah, no good stuff. Thank you. Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you. A couple of areas to ask questions on. One, in looking at it, and I didn't see one of the slides that was in the material I was provided in our briefing here, but it talked about short-term redevelopment and longer-term When we look at overall redevelopment in this area and the overall slide, there, there are various people, as you said, you haven't talked to, but I presume they would go along and play or they might not. When we get to redevelopment and talk about the percentages of redevelopment for what's going to be there, residential is a big factor in redevelopment of this area. So we're going to bring a lot more people in. And I think that was one of the topics that I had touched on the last time we talked, was where, where do we look at for short-term and long-term, the residential portion of this redevelopment going? How many, how many people are we bringing into this area from that standpoint or are we expecting to bring into this area?
I think you have the numbers, but, you know, we have areas that we think develop more quickly than others, so.
Yeah, we, I, I think in general, we're seeing a lot of interest in residential uses coming here. You know, there's, there's not a lot of rental properties within the city in general and especially, especially in Camp Washington. The Moxley is kind of the first new residential project in a very long time and, and it's the first residential project within the study area in decades, really, so. And that will continue, it's, you know, I, I think, having observed this local regional market for almost 20 years now, you, you see, you know, retail has, has kind of five years of, of trend and then residential kind of follows and then office, you know, there are different phases of the, the real estate market. Right now, there's a, there's a regional housing shortage, rents are, you know, the rents, the, the apartment supply is very constrained and this is a very good location for, you know, students, for workers in the region, people that, you know, work in Reston or Tyson's Corner or even the district. It has some accessibility to metro. So, you know, Camp Washington is a very strong area for residential mixed uses. And I, I think in broad terms, what we're seeing in the near-term is a strong residential demand. Retail, you know, had, had a dip in COVID, but I think we're seeing it come back pretty strongly, actually, especially in regions like, in areas like Camp Washington. So we're actually very optimistic about retail. It may not like in total numbers rise quickly, but it will stay the same or, or increase over time and it will evolve. That's kind of the key thing, these adaptive reuses, new construction, reskinning of some of these older properties. Office, you know, I think the office market with, with COVID and working from home, that's kind of on a downswing regionally, not unique to Camp Washington, but, you know, I, I think we'll, we'll see that trend play out here. And, but then there are special uses like industrial or kind of unique, unique cases that you, you could see easily playing out in Camp Washington. So you're right, in broad, kind of in general, we're seeing a lot of demand right now, today in 2022 for residential and that will continue in the next five years. And, and we're optimistic about retail. And, and, you know, the hotels may, may stay or leave. It's not going to be a strong hotel market right now because there's a lot of regional competition, but we do see a place for hospitality within the region, maybe one or two new hotels.
I think, just to be very clear, that's why we have a, a near-term and a long-term vision, because it'll take a while to get to the long vision if you ever get there. Because what happens is, as you know, the, the wonderful thing is, you know, we always talk about this, a statement I like to make is like, you know, growth will happen, it can either shape you or you can shape it. So what Fairfax is doing in this area, the city, is shaping, trying to shape and guide through thoughtful dialogue with community and, and decision-makers, where, where we go, what it is, how it works, et cetera. That's what these small area plans are about. So by doing that, you set the vision out there and that starts to spark people. In plans that we and I have been involved in over 30 years, there's a plan that I was involved in in the early 90s. And I remember my little diagram that showed Axon, where all developed what happened and a lot of areas didn't develop, but within the last three years, five sites that were never envisioned to go for, you know, quickly, have all of a sudden popped up. There was a critical mass that started to turn. So I think what you'll find here is you'll find retail developers or retail owners of property, take a look at a site and say, hey, can I work with maybe doing a piece of infill on a portion of that and still keep my retail going? Because it's income-producing and, and desired. So there may be incremental changes, as we've talked about, and then eventually, as things start to mature and they see where it's going to go, it'll happen. So there are a number of sites that people we know are starting to think about or looking at, that I'm sure you'll be hearing about, too, which has been sparked by this whole process. So that's actually exciting, that's, that's what you want.
Okay. I gather what you're telling me is we're going to have a lot more people living in Camp Washington's area. And as such, that's, I guess, good news in the long time, as it was described 25 years ago in the 2020 plan that was done by the city and some things along that line. Discussion was back and forth and you were going to have to bring people in these areas to provide the client base for most of the retail that's going to occur and then other portions of that will migrate in to use good retail. So with no people there, you're not going to get the retail, everybody coming in, but with people there, you'll get both migration in and local and that makes it successful. So some of those principles carry on for a very long time in going there. I guess flipping from that one, one would be quantity of who and how that's going to go that would be interested in a little more of to see who and how as it goes short-term and long-term, because this is one portion of the city where there's a lot of interest in residential development. In fact, as you know, we've been talking about affordable housing for a long time. More recently, as you're aware of Alexandria, they're talking about mid-level housing and how do we get more of that? So housing is an issue that's here to stay and we have to deal with it going forward. When we look at transportation, and I realize that the expert isn't here tonight, I know there were studies done on transportation on Fairfax Boulevard, on Lee Highway, and this program will be dated very quickly when that name is changed, right after you publish it and, and it comes out new. And things along that line, but when we look at the major road structure in there, Germantown, Fairfax Boulevard, Lee Highway, we have transportation studies pre-COVID as to how busy it was. Do we have any that are relatively current to say what impact has COVID had with the major changes that have gone on in the last two years? Is the traffic down substantially on those major roads as we're looking forward? And what might the impact be going forward if we're going to bring a lot of people in there to get into the safety measures to make that area safe? Right now, I don't believe you've got many pedestrians along any of those major roads on a given day. You have a few that are back in there, but if you're going to bring a lot of people in and make it walkable and accessible and bikeable, then they're going to want to cross the, the major roads and that, so that, that transportation study, I feel, is, is critical to, to who and how it's going to redevelop in the way we would like it to redevelop. It will redevelop, but may have unintended consequences otherwise.
You touched on a lot of really good topics and we'll, we'll forward your question on to the Kittleson staff and kind of get their, their response. I, I do want to say, and this is something we've talked about a lot, is Camp Washington right now, today, has a lot of single-use properties. In fact, you know, when you look at it in totality, it's a lot of retail strip centers that all have coinciding peak hours, like on a Saturday morning, it's, it's, everyone's going to the Walmart, they're going to the, kind of the, the, all the, you know, the, the major strip centers. And I, I think by bringing in, you know, and in the near-term, you know, maybe we'll see 1,000 units in the next three to five years come in, residential units in a mixed use kind of format. Those users have a different peak hour system, they have, they, it kind of, mixed use communities have a, a unique attribute where the traffic patterns don't have like kind of these high swings in traffic volume, but rather they're kind of more, more tightly regulated. Like the office users are different from the residential users or different from the retail users and, and when you add that all up, it kind of evens the traffic flow out. So yes, theoretically you have more people there, but it actually has a more balanced traffic flow. And that's something Kittleson has talked about and I think they write in the report and write to that point.
Much of that, I think, will be impacted along with those roads being major, major transit roads because of the area. And you have an accident on 66 and all of a sudden you find all of those people coming out and using these roads.
Yeah, we think, so the Moxley has 400 new units and we think about, they're in the middle of the middle of the triangle.
Right.
Those kids are going to the middle school, or, you know, going to the community, going to the dog park, you know, those families are walking around. That's, you know, as these properties within the triangle develop, your point is well taken. We need to design these crosswalks, these, you know, kind of just think about the pedestrian quality and safety.
Yeah, that going forward. The city of Fairfax has typically felt it was a small town, and wanted to maintain that kind of atmosphere. In much of what we're doing in the study and the report, I see the word urban. And the word urban, to me, is not small town. It's dense, it's multi, multipurpose, multifunction, residential and that, closely packed, much as many European cities are, where you've got a whole lot of stuff, and you get out of town, and you've got a lot of rural area around it. I'm not sure where we're headed in that, but my sense is that because of our geographic location, close to DC, in a rapidly growing economic area, we are headed toward urban, even though we like to use small town. So the density we're talking about is headed toward urban densities, at least in these five areas. And by developing these five areas in town, we may be able to keep some smaller density in Old Town, and some character, as opposed to rebuilding the whole thing, trying to depend on four historic buildings that we're going to, to have parceled out. Much like going to the Alamo in San Antonio, when you hear the stories of the Alamo, you're awed. You go and see it, and it's a small, tiny park that we can put in downtown, surrounded by big office buildings, and now you don't understand the, you know, the significance or the context.
I was going to say something, and you, you basically took my thunder by explaining exactly what it is. The only thing I would add is that, you know, when Fairfax was established, it was urban compared to where it was. And portions of this city will be more urbanized, as you described, as we grow, because we will grow, the city, the region. Again, how do you shape that? So by going to the activity areas outside of downtown, which is a cultural hub, and the arts hub, you'll be able to protect that. You know, there's a, there's a, part of it is a small town, you can have a small town feel, where people talk to each other, they get out together. That's what we're kind of trying to target here, of those places of coming together, sharing with your neighbors, being able to walk to places. Right now, you know, Camp Fairfax is, or Washington is very difficult, I mean, you can't, you got to drive. And we're the vision that all the participants have talked about, is to bring about a place that you can walk and gather, and, and neighborhood gathering. So you explained it very well, but this is, this is how you protect the overall culture and, and place of what Fairfax is known for, as opposed to turning it into suburban sprawl. Totally. So you explained it the best.
I, I just wanted Adam to pull up the, the one slide with the comprehensive plan. We, we've really studied the comprehensive plan, and, and reading the language of the plan, you know, highlighted these five small area, five, five small areas as, I don't know if we can pull up that slide. The city's not big, you know, it's, it's kind of a, within the city of Northern Virginia, it's, it's small. And, you know, if growth was to happen within the city of Fairfax, I think the comprehensive plan nailed it. It's these five purple areas that really represent the, kind of the, they're the exciting locations. And, and I think if you, if you like, reduce growth in these five areas, you, it'll show up somewhere in the city, you know, you know, probably in places that you may not actually want this density. So, you know, I, I think a lot of attention, we've paid a lot of attention, a lot of analysis on Camp Washington, North facts, Old Town, and those are the exciting areas within the city. I agree with what, what you just said.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Actually, don't have anything to add. One of the big ones we talked about earlier, about safety. I wouldn't, I won't say that that's missed in our smaller plans, it's not. I just don't think it's emphasized enough. Because it's very car-centric in a number of these areas, and it's, it, it can be easy to say that we're interested in creating an environment that's safe for all, but it's much, much harder, you guys know, to do it. So I think that type of oomph, perhaps in this plan, is warranted, at least in my personal view. Do you guys have questions for us? I know that this is the last time we're going to meet for the final plan. Is that right, Mr. Napti?
Yes, that's, that's the current plan.
Okay. Is there anything we didn't address, you need us to? Anything like that?
Paul, do you, we, we had a long conversation, did we, we had a small list of things that we wanted, some discussion on?
I, I think you've covered everything.
Yeah, I think we've covered everything.
Okay. Yes?
The only thing I would say is, obviously, a small plan, a small area plan can make a lot of recommendations, but, and, and give a guidance for where implementation can go. But again, it comes back to planning commission, city council, to, to say, this is what I want done. You know, we can't dictate that in a plan, we can make recommendations of what should happen. But the things we're talking about on pedestrian safety, you know, this is not the first time, Mr. Chairman, that you have raised this. I remember those discussions for Old Town, and the concerns. So there, it's the how places become urbanized with cars, more than anything else. So how do you get the pedestrians safe? So I think we can add a little bit more oomph, as you said, or detail, to some of these rec, potential recommendations. But I, you know, I know from our discussions with the city staff, that, you know, this is, they're involved in looking at this, and I don't think, I, I don't know all the specifics, we don't know all the specifics. Paul could probably talk more of that, but I know Wendy and the team are looking at that, planning is looking at that. So this is definitely on their radar, too. So we can give you a little, a few more recommendations. But if that's really important, I mean, that's what should be put in your recommendation to council, it's like, we need to implement policies, and, and actually get it on the ground for these ideas of road diets, and pedestrian first, et cetera. I mean, right now, the problem with Camp Washington is, you're taking your, just like the Old Town to some degree, but much more out there, is you're taking your life into your hand, trying to get across, because of all those distances you saw. At least Old Town has a grid, that you, you know, if people stop, they'll do it. We're going to create a grid out there, and that gives us great hope for the connectivity of stopping. It's getting like you were talking, four-way stops don't always work, but other cities where they have a grid, where they have four-way stops, I mean, yeah, some people will run it, and after they get stopped by the police a couple times, you know, it happens. Most people are respectful enough of a four-way stop, because people will be crossing. So I, I wouldn't say they blow by at all times. So I, I think otherwise, Adam, you got anything?
I was just going to point out, one thing to really keep in mind is the idea of this incremental change, doing demonstration projects, testing things out. We're really emphasizing that in this plan particularly, because people can't imagine a parking lot as a gathering place, but if it temporarily becomes a place occupied by food trucks and activity, then suddenly you're like, oh, okay, this could be a place that we could go and walk to and imagine. So looking, and I try and to identify those moments, I think can also start to test out those transportation concerns, can start to test out, hey, what if we did close the service road for, you know, a week or two? Like, let's see what happens. Does it actually cause that impact that we're worried about? So I think, you know, we're really encouraging, kind of pushing those kind of ideas in this plan as well.
Okay. Mr. Wright's just sent me a text, he doesn't have any comments. He's, he's listening, he's still here. But he does not have any questions or comments, so he also thanks you for that. Anything else from the commissioners before we wrap up? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coyle, Mr. Mitresak, and Mr. Chamey. It's nice to see you guys tonight. I guess we'll see you in September, hopefully.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time and comments. Okay. Ms. Cluart, thank you, also. Okay, we'll move on to item B in the work session. And Mr. Napti, you're leading this, right? Okay. Are you going to sit in front of us there? Okay. The, before Mr. Napti gets started on this, you know, normally I would just let the staff start, but just quickly, to refresh everybody's recollection, and just to put a little bit of context before we get into some, sometimes arcane conversation, and a little bit granular, just, I think the council, the commission members in, in January, or early February of 2021, I know Ms. Lockhart and Mr. Coleman were not here, we even had a member that was on the commission then, who's no longer with us. He's still in the world, he's just not on this commission. He, we raised a concern that I think had been a concern of planning commissions prior to my joining here, for a number of years. And so what we're going to talk about tonight is not new. It might be the first time since I've been involved that we will talk about it, but it's something that has been an issue, and has, has been raised, and I know what was talked about when they rewrote the zoning ordinance a number of years ago. But just for some, some quick context, what, what we asked, or what we sort of described, was a number of potential, really, city-changing developments, not just in scale, but in use, that significantly, that are, that only, can be significantly accomplished without any consent or assent from this body. And as, as far as I know, that's an outlier of sorts in the region. And I don't think that every single thing we do here in the city, development-wise, may need to go through this body, it probably doesn't. But certainly, there can be, our entire activity centers can theoretically be redeveloped without this body talking about it at all. So I think, I think talking about this potential issue, this issue tonight, is important, not just for that reason, but I, I would argue that it promotes stability and consistency, not the opposite. And it would probably promote some expediency, not the opposite. So I just wanted to raise that, and say that as clearly as I could, I hope that was clear. That is the subject of what we're doing this evening. Mr. Napti was good enough to put together a number of scenarios for us to discuss, and I know you have a presentation also, that will probably tell us why the zoning ordinance is the way it is. And I don't want to guess, because I wasn't there, Mr. Cunningham, I'm sure, will probably tell me if he needs to. But I just wanted to throw that out there, give everybody some context, not to lose sight of the big picture, when we have sort of some granular conversations about sort of what the objective is. So with that, Mr. Napti, I hope I didn't take too much of what you were going to say, but we look forward to, to having this discussion with you.
Great, thank you, Chair Angers, that was, that was very helpful, a good introduction to this discussion. I'll also try to provide a little bit of background for the commissioners, and explain why we're talking about special use permits in particular, in regards to the concerns that Chair Angers raised, and that were expressed to the city council in the letter that came from the chair, with the support from the commissioners last year. So to provide some background, first to explain what a special use is. The zoning ordinance describes it as being a use that's generally acceptable and compatible in any specific zoning district, but may have adverse effects on neighboring properties, or the health, safety, or welfare of the city. And you might recall in the staff report, we provided gas stations as an example of this, because gas stations are allowed by special use in the commercial retail district. That's our most common commercial zoning district in the city. And it, those districts are mostly occupied by offices, retail establishments, and those kind of things. And gas stations are considered commercial type of property, but they have some attributes that are different from your standard commercial properties, which could raise concerns about those impacts to surrounding properties. Those include things like fumes, and noise, and those types of things. So as an example, that's something that is only allowed by special use permit, and that allows additional layer of review, to determine if particular properties are actually appropriate for that use, even though it is considered appropriate in that district, or if it might be appropriate with some conditions applied, that would help mitigate some of those impacts. Some examples of additional special uses, they are designated by the, each zoning district. And so, as you know, in the zoning ordinance, we have residential zoning districts, commercial districts, and industrial districts. So some examples here are the residential of special use, special uses in residential and commercial districts. We're not showing industrial districts, because there aren't very many of them, and there are very few, that I think would come across, come across your path at any time. But in addition to just being divided by the districts that they're in, special uses can also apply to both principal uses, which are the, the main uses on any given site, and there is the, a table in the zoning ordinance that identifies which principal uses are allowed by right, or by special use permit, or not at all, in each district. They also can apply to accessory uses, which are secondary uses that are tied to the, the principal uses on any given site. So for an example, and looking at residential, residential districts, principal use that is allowed by special use permit in, in many of the residential districts is assisted living. And then a special use that's permitted in some of the commercial districts by special use permit are multifamily and mixed-use buildings. Then accessory uses, as you can see, just get into much more fine-grained, less impactful types of uses. So for example, in many of the single-family districts, daycare homes, which are in-home daycares that provide care for five or more children, are permitted by special use permits. The, the home itself is the principal use, and then the daycare service is the accessory use. In commercial districts, drive-throughs are example of accessory use, allowed by special use permits. So for drive-throughs, the, the restaurant itself is the principal use, which is allowed by right. But drive-throughs are accessory use, that are only allowed by special use permit, so they would have to go through a separate process. Some other examples of, of uses that are allowed by special use permit in many of the residential districts, daycare centers are allowed by special use, along with government uses, parks and open spaces, religious institutions, schools, and bed and breakfasts. In commercial districts, some common special uses are hospitals, and outdoor, indoor and outdoor recreation uses. Also note that major utilities and telecommunications facilities are allowed by special use permits in almost all districts. So then talking about, after talking about special uses, I wanted to explain the special use permit process. The special use permit is required in the zoning ordinance to allow any special use where it's defined in the underlying zoning district as being allowed by special use. So there's a process involved to, to allow somebody to, to have a special use on their site. And this involves a review and approval by city council, with a recommendation from, from city staff. Specific criteria for their review of special use permits is provided in the zoning ordinance. And as we noted before, the planning commission is not subject to review or recommendation of special use permits to city council, as they are for, for rezonings and plan developments and other types of land uses. So to provide a little more background on, on why we're having this discussion about special use permits, as, as Mr. Angers noted, the letter that was submitted to city council stated a concern about the planning commission not providing a recommendation to city council on, on certain projects that could have a significant impact on the character of the city, or significant connections to the comprehensive plan objectives. The letter also cited a potential special use permit request at that time, for an assisted living facility in a single-family district. And as you know, an assisted living facility can be a multi-story building, often looks kind of like a multifamily building, and this is something that's allowed by special use permit in a single-family district. That project did not end up moving forward, but there have been subsequent projects since then, with similar characteristics, that might go forward with only requiring a special use permit. So when considering these concerns, staff looked at several alternatives on how they could be addressed through modifications to the zoning ordinance. And we broke these up into two types of modifications, the first being procedural modifications, which looks at ways we could change the special use permit review process, and the second And the second process, or second set of alternatives, would look at, rather than changing the special use permit review process, actually going through the use table and identifying uses where special use permits allow certain uses and modifying those where appropriate. We could also look at other things there. There might be cases where uses, we might determine that uses are allowed by special use permit, but we think they could be allowed by right or something like that. So we could move in either direction there. So I'll start, though, by looking at the options that we looked at regarding procedural modifications. And also, before we get to discussion, I just wanted to note that any modifications to the zoning ordinance will require us going through the public hearing process and obviously require input from the City Council and likely other outreach. So the first option we looked at was no change, which the impacts of that are obvious, just continuing reviews as they are. The second is for the Planning Commission to review all special use permits. Now, this would obviously allow the Planning Commission to become involved in anything that might be of interest, that would add significantly to the caseload. And also, as you saw on the earlier slide, about the variety of the types of uses that can be accommodated with special use permits, that could be getting involved in some of those less impactful types of uses and uses that don't necessarily have any impact on the built environment, meaning that they aren't actually having any land impacts. Another option we looked at, recognizing that the second option might get more into the weeds than the Planning Commission could be interested in, is to review, or have the Planning Commission review only special use permits that apply to the principal use. So if you remember from the previous slide, we looked at like the assisted living facility as an example, the mixed-use upper story residential in a commercial district as an example. But this would eliminate the accessory uses. So you wouldn't be looking at in-home daycares or drive-throughs or other types of uses like that. And then the last two alternatives are both options where we try to use the process to identify those special use permits that have some kind of impact to the site, meaning some kind of building expansion or redevelopment, those kind of things. So the two options, two ways of dealing with that are to identify those special use permits where a site plan is required. An administrative site plan is something that is usually required after the land use process. And that's required in any case where there's any disturbance to the land for the improvement to happen. So again, that would eliminate in-home daycares. That'd eliminate any kind of business moving into a building that's already there. So another type of example are veterinary clinics that require special use permits. If one of a veterinary clinic were to move into an existing building, then that would not be subject to review. But if we were to construct a new building, that would be subject to review. And then the last one is looking at special use permits where a special exception is also required. Along a similar vein, this wouldn't necessarily look at those cases that require site plan review, but it would pull those where a special exception is required in addition to the special use permit. And these often occur where there is impact to the land because most special exceptions apply to dimensional standards that impact the land. So these would be cases where there's a special use permit, but it also has a request for a special exception to maximum height or to the setbacks or those kind of things. So the difference between those last two is that those that also request special exceptions tend to be the larger, more intensive projects because they're more constrained. But that's not to say that some projects might slip through without having to have a special exception that are more impactful and larger in scale. The next alternative we looked at, as I mentioned, is rather than reviewing the process, is looking at the use table itself. So the use table and the accessory use table are two separate tables provided in the zoning ordinance that identify what uses are permitted, permitted by special use or not permitted in each zoning district. That's provided in attachment to your staff report for reference. So permitted uses are uses that require administrative review only. They aren't required to go through any land use process. So they aren't reviewed by the Planning Commission or the City Council or any other board or commission unless they require Board of Architecture review. Special uses, as we mentioned, those are required to go for the City Council for a decision, but do not have a venue for the Planning Commission to provide a recommendation. And then lastly, if there's no symbol shown, that means a use is not permitted. So if somebody were to try to accommodate a use on a site where it's not permitted, they would have to go through a rezoning, which would, which would mean it would come before the Planning Commission for a recommendation before going to City Council. Lastly, I wanted to state that the review process can be impacted by site conditions as well. This primarily relates to special exceptions. So uses that are permitted by right, if they don't meet all of the dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance, they may still be required to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals or the City Council, depending on the number of special exceptions that they would need for those. Also, in some cases, there are proposals that are, that are, might meet the use requirements, but that the dimensional requirements are so off from the zoning ordinance that there'd be so many special exceptions or that clearly it doesn't meet the intent of that zoning district that the applicant might choose to have a rezoning or use a planned district anyway, in which case it would come before the Planning Commission. So this is a, just a piece of the use table. It is shown, for example, as you can see, all the zoning districts are listed across the top. They're broken into not residential and non-residential categories. All the Rs are residential, Ts are commercial, and Is are industrial. So for all the squares, a P across the columns means it is permitted. S means it's permitted by special use. And blank means it's not permitted. So if we were to go through the process of going through this table and determining if any of these designations should change, we would first want to identify which uses to reconsider. And then staff would support the Planning Commission in researching each use. We would look to define the purpose of the designation as it is, as now, by going back and trying to find why it was designated that way in the original zoning ordinance. We would consider potential adverse effects of each use and how that could still be considered. We would look at how peer jurisdictions review those uses and also look at approved examples. And of course, this information could change for any type of use, but that's just an example of the type of information that we would look for. So then, kind of summarizing the process if we were to go through with zoning ordinance amendments, we would first seek direction from the Planning Commission on how to proceed. And staff would continue with research and follow with the Planning Commission on discussions of those. We would, of course, have to have additional discussions with the commission as well as City Council and possible outreach to the general public. And as we stated before, that any amendments to the zoning ordinance would have to be supported by the City Council as well. The overall timing it would take to make these changes is dependent on the discussions. So it depends on the extent of the changes that we're making and the amount of changes that we make. And so the timing is pretty much in flux at this point, but we get more information once we start to move forward. So that's all we have for the staff report. At this point, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Napti. I think that's a lot to digest. That's just me. Because to me, there's a lot that goes into deciding how to give you instruction. Removing things from the use table takes, will take a lot of analysis. And I actually don't know where that ends up in the end, whether or not it's better for the city or not. Again, I don't want to lose sight of the situation. So let me just ask you one question, Mr. Napti. Is there, do you know how many special use permits the City Council heard in 2021? Or in any recent year? I hope I didn't put you on the spot there.
I believe I do.
Okay.
Just to make sure I find the right paperwork here. Okay. So just to get a sense of what we are looking at, we looked at actually at every special use permit that has been reviewed by City Council since the zoning ordinance was adopted in 2016. And that number is, of all special use permits, including those that are associated with other applications like rezonings, there's were 37 special use permits.
Okay, in six years?
Yes, an average of 7.4 per year.
Okay.
If that helps.
7.4 per year?
Yeah.
Okay. And some of them are accessories, right?
Yes.
Okay. Like drive-throughs, that's happened a number of times, right? The reason why I ask that is because I am cognizant of potential staff issues, other types of procedural questions to be answered. So I just wanted the commission to have a sense about what the scale of what we're talking about here. We've had a number of meetings that just get canceled because there's nothing to do. So I don't know if it's an issue for us necessarily, but I wanted to raise that just so that we understood what it meant for the staff potentially. So I think that number's helpful. Could you, could you just tell us quickly, and you said that you would do this depending on what direction we gave? What was the, when the zoning ordinance was rewritten, what was the impetus for leaving the planning body out and essentially what is the most central planning decisions? What was the purpose of that?
I'll defer that to Mr. Harden. He was more involved in that process.
Okay. We're all friends.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members. I mean, the general procedure for special use permits dates back since the beginning, since the ordinance, the city originally adopted.
I got it.
Zoning. And I say that generally, I can't tell you that I've looked at exactly when that was. It was something that was discussed when the ordinance was readopted in 2016. And the rationale kind of throughout the zoning ordinance at that point was, we want to seek as much efficiency as we can. We want to be streamlined as we can. We want to clean things up in the ordinance that are confusing. We want to rely more heavily on standards in the ordinance as opposed to legislative approvals. And so it was discussed, but there was a desire not to add a layer, so to speak, in terms of the review process. So expanding the review of special use permits was not pursued as part of that effort.
So that was done under the previous comprehensive plan?
It was.
It was. And it wasn't obviously rewritten or readopted with an eye towards any of the small area plans that we're doing, probably. So, you know, I think in that sense, revisiting the procedure is probably appropriate since it was written quite some time ago. And I believe things have changed with this body, certainly have changed with the governing body. So with that being said, I mean, I'd like to hear what the commissioners think about this. There's a, I just think there's a lot to answer tonight. So I'd like to see if I can break this down a little bit. Let's talk about simplicity, right? I mean, do we want to keep it, because we've been doing this for a while, as simple as we can? Or do we want to sort of uproot it to achieve, you know, the most efficient way? Mr. Coleman?
My thought process is that this was adopted at a time when the city didn't even have an affordable housing plan. That's changed. The small area plans, those have changed. And Mr. Quill said it really well earlier. It's like, growth is going to happen, change is going to happen. It's going to shape you or you're going to shape it. And I think if this is an opportunity that we have to shape it, to put it with the comprehensive plan, that incorporates a lot of the things that we want. Pedestrian-friendly, safety, affordable housing, all of that. Where if we are taken out of that and we are a forward-looking body, we don't have the chance to even say, hey, I think this makes sense. And it's left to, I don't want to say the whim of City Council, but there's a reason the Planning Commission's here. It's to give that forward-looking advice to the council. And if we aren't even a part of that, what are we doing?
I had a similar thought in a similar context. Mr. Harden, you talked about efficiency and streamlining the process. And that's important from a tactical, from an execution standpoint. But it can potentially overlook the strategic planning standpoint, which is what this body is really for. I took note of, this presentation was made to the City Council some months ago now by an outside consulting firm that was brought in to help look at our development review process. It seems to me they identified a number of areas for opportunity for making some of these kind of efficiency and streamlining things and perhaps simplification and perhaps even better cost recovery on the part of the city. Those discussions didn't involve the Planning Commission at all, which kind of baffled me a little bit. But it tells me there are plenty of other opportunities to achieve those efficiency and streamlining goals. And this may present an opportunity for us to bring back into it some with a strategic oversight and thinking, which is the role of the Planning Commission. It's not really a question, it's just an observation of how this development review process is kind of being looked at, perhaps in disparate sections that maybe should be thought about a little bit more comprehensively. So, and that's kind of my perspective. I think we can achieve both goals and still have a better process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to second what Mr. Harden said about why we went about rewriting the zoning ordinance. I was a participant in that process. And when this process came up, it was pointed out that our zoning ordinance was very old, dating back to the 1970s. It had been amended so many times that there were contradictions within the zoning ordinance at that time. You know, one part would say one thing and another part would contradict that totally. So that it was time for a rewrite. I will add that when we went through the contractor selection process and then the process of rewriting the zoning ordinance, it was pounded up, pointed out at a number of meetings that we were not going to get a perfect document when we were done. That it was a document that was going to be updated to the best of our ability. It was updated by an outside contractor who was not conversant with all of the nuances within the city of various things that are local. And as such, that there was an expectation that while we got a brand-new document, one of the things we would start looking at were how to improve that document and tailor it to the city of Fairfax. And I believe from the number of zoning ordinance amendments we have made since that time, that that's exactly what we have been doing. And I think it has been beneficial to go through that process. I think also, though, that when we went through it, we came up with the best document we could. But we also understood there were going to be unintended consequences, which we have heard in some of the zoning text amendments that we have amended, which we have heard in various of the processes that come up and which are embedded in the letter that we sent to staff and to council. Because prior to this latest iteration where we were not going to be included in the property that was discussed in the chairman's letter, we had been involved with reviewing that property, I believe, two occasions prior to that in the discussion of who and how it was going to proceed. So streamline, yes. But eliminate us from important elements of what are being looked at was no. That was not an intended consequence. So cutting out... So cutting us out of the special exception process, that's correct, because there were no special exceptions that I can remember that came through that were major projects in the city that had not come through the planning commission at that point. And the planning commission and its review of projects had had the opportunity through all of the tools available to us, be it the comprehensive plan, be it the capital improvement process, be it any of the major processes the city went through, took the opportunity to be forward-looking. And one example I will cite is that the city used to have its own water department and its own water treatment facility. And the planning commission and the CIP process, I believe, started looking at that two years prior to the city grappling with the issue and several years prior to the final decision. So it's not a matter that the planning commission has not been involved making recommendations on important elements in the city. So that at this time, I think we don't want to, to set back the process by causing the city to add a lot of staff, a lot of unnecessary cost to applicants, a lot of unnecessary time and effort on projects that need to move forward. But when it comes to major projects, such as the one that was referenced in the chairman's letter, to be eliminated from the process, I don't think was our intention either. So I think looking at an option that would modify this process so that those major projects, which do impact, the term stated in the letter, should give us the opportunity to comment, not approve necessarily, but to comment on those kinds of projects that affect the major character issues. Now, as we have seen in a recent development decision, we can have an opinion that is contrary to the final approval of a project. And I don't think that hurts our credibility, I don't think it hurts the value we add to reviewing the process, and I don't think it necessarily muddies the water so much that we should be eliminated in the name of streamlining the process. So from that standpoint, I would think there is something that we can do to target those projects which should come through us for at least comment, because they do impact the elements we lay out. And I will remind you that the planning commission is the responsible party for the comprehensive plan. The spinoffs that have come out of that, the recommendation for small area plans, that's not a staff issue, that's not a council issue that we'd be directed, it's something we worked on together with staff to develop as a recommendation. The fact book is something that we went through the comp plan process and had all of the data there, and it was in coordination with staff that we recommended that be split out of the comprehensive plan and made a standalone document so that we could keep the comprehensive plan where it was easily usable by the potential user base. The six-month review or annual review of projects and how we were coming along was also spread out as an attachment to the comprehensive plan, not a major part of it. So I think the evolution that has gone on in the planning commission in our dealing with issues has been useful in keeping the planning commission relevant to its purpose. And this glaring error, as I would view it, is something that I think can be adjusted so that it keeps the process streamlined and so that it keeps the process effective. I don't think it needs to add a huge amount of extra cost in either people's time on the staff, which would result in the addition of a staff person, in a cost that would drive potential applicants away because they're not going to bear whatever that administrative cost would be out. I think all of that can be accomplished as we move forward and meet the intent of the letter we sent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What either one of you like to follow that up?
I'll ask a quick question. I know with deference to, you know, respecting staff time and also appreciating that you had some respect for our time in terms of the workload, is the use of joint sessions between council and planning commission kind of not something that's traditionally done? Or is that a tool that could be leveraged more when some of these projects do come up in the future? Am I putting myself in jeopardy here? No.
I know that question. That's, that's true. There has been joint work sessions in the past. It is a practice in the last few years that we've moved away from. I think there was, I think there's a few aspects of that. One, there's kind of a practical piece of, of, of your time or the council's time, someone has to show up on a night that's not their night to be here, which, you know, seems like a small thing, but, but actually those that did the joint sessions, it's, we ask a lot of your time already, and asking you then to show up again, I think, is a challenge. That's kind of on the practical side, more on the kind of policy aspect. I think there was some perception that there's, it wasn't the most comfortable forum for either body to kind of share more candidly what their thoughts are. And, because truly, the role of the planning commission, the role of council are different. And, you know, blending those together to some level kind of, you know, dissipates what the differences are in those roles. And I think on the planning, planning commission side in particular, there was a desire to be able to talk kind of amongst yourselves as a body, collect your thoughts on it before you make a recommendation to the council. Not that you would be at a work session, but having that opportunity to kind of talk independently, I think, was an important aspect. Certainly something that, you know, we can always think through, you know, if some, you know, something has changed in that regard, but those are some of the issues that we ran into.
Sure. I'm just saying in terms of the number of sessions that need to be held for a particularly large project, but, I mean, I, to your point about the different roles, I see the planning commission as stewards of that comprehensive plan, of stewards of the planning process for the city. And the council, of course, is responsible to their constituents, people who are electing them. I understand the division of labor there. But what has, I'll say surprised, could be disappointed, but I'll say surprised me the most in about a year on, on planning commission now is because of the sort of interjection of special use permits or these, these sort of decisions that get made outside the normal channel, or what I would consider the normal planning channel, we're not able to evaluate things holistically. We get pieces of different development slates, right? Or we potentially are only looking at pieces of development slates when it comes to the small area plans or major swaths of development. So perhaps that's a metric that we consider, is this a special use permit that is adjacent to things that we are reviewing? Because then we do, you know, set aside a whole category of things to look at that do impact each other. I'm still in favor technically of reviewing everything. I cautiously say that seven per year doesn't seem excessively undue in terms of commissioner time, but.
For, as far as a minor, I wouldn't see it.
Wouldn't see it, right. So, but I mean, I think those are the, those sort of ability to look at things in service of the comprehensive plan, I think that's what remain our goal in terms of how we add these to our plate.
Thank you, Ms. Lockard. Well said. Mr. Repdakari.
So I just took some notes here, just to follow up on my fellow commissioners' comments here. I mean, the planning commission's goal is to provide the mayor and the council, you know, advisory on land use policies and plans, which the overall goal is orderly, balanced, and equitable city growth, right? Particularly as it relates or applies in the 2035 comprehensive plan, which we're stewards of and so forth. But since my time on the commission, I always sensed that there's a minority that feels the commission has outlived the usefulness.